Okay, I'd like to call the Finance Committee meeting of the Quincy City Council order. And the first agenda is a public hearing, and I'd like to open that public hearing to take comments from the public on the budget. I would at this time like to limit everyone, when they come up, to speak two minutes to make it on the budget and on the material before us tonight. And also, before I start that, I'd like to read the open meeting law. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public hearing or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. So we're going to start off with the public hearing. Could you call the roll on who's here? Clerk of Committees?
Counselor Andronico.
President.
Counselor Kane.
President.
Counselor DeBona.
President.
Counselor Harris.
President.
Counselor Liang.
President.
Counselor Mahoney.
Counselor McCarthy.
Counselor Palmucci.
Chairman Fallon.
President.
Six members, you have a quorum.
Six members, we have a quorum, and we'll begin. And at this time, we're going to start with the public hearing, and I will take comments from the public. I'd like people to come up and make their comments, and we like to limit people to ten, two minutes, and actually stay on the material that is before you, which is the budget of the city of Quincy. Anybody wishing to speak on the budget? Could you please give us your name and your address?
Okay, two minutes is going to be quick. I almost feel like basketball, like I got to prepare. But John Rotafield, 62 Grand Wall Road. Okay, basically, I'm concerned about debt. I want to make sure that we issue enough debt to cover our debt service. It says the pension obligation bonds that you borrowed, $475 million. So far to date, they're down at least 6%, which is $28 million, plus the interest. Half of that would be about $5 million, so that's $32 million. So it's not looking like it's saving $120 million, so we're underfunding that part. In the last year, we had six different issues, actually seven different issues for $281 million worth of debt. So our direct debt is now $1.15 billion. It was 5.5. $600 billion, $600 million worth of new direct debt. Land acquisition and planning, school roof windows, city park improvement, land acquisition, capital improvements, land acquisition, 178 Old Colony, public safety headquarters, Broad Meadows, school repair, roadways, water, district improvement financing, additional district improvement financing, North Quincy High School roof, road sidewalk repairs, Adams, Quincy Diff, Quincy Diff. So just a lot of debt, debt after debt after debt after debt. We have so much debt. These are all debt things, but I only have two minutes, so we're going to move to the things that go towards the bonds. Basically, the pension, we only put $7 million in there this year. We only put $7,500, $7,400 this year and last year. We should have been putting $38 or $41 million. So we underfunded that, hoping we would make money, but instead we lost money. The way I look at it, we're down at least $100 million this year. We need $49 million a year just to pay the people from the pension, so we're going to have to take additional funds out of the pension just to pay for that. So we need more money for debt service. We need money for court judgments, $350,000. We need $6 million more to pay the McCallum family. Okay, collections and waste. It's more to throw stuff away. We need more money. Snow, we need more money. Education, we need more money. Animal control, we need more money. Those are the ones we need more money. People at the elections office, they need more money. Where can we save money? There's a, we spend a lot on planning. We spend a lot on information technology. The website's down too much. Traffic and parking, wow, we could cut out of that. Public buildings, we can cut out of that. Debt service, we can't cut out of that. Municipal finance, even though Eric does a great job, $1.8 million is a lot to spend. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you very much. It was very fun tonight. Peace.
Okay, please state your name and address.
Bill Zamsato, 356 Washington Street. I can't talk that fast, but I'll do my best, and I've cut down as much as I can. Yet again, the administration's put up a woefully problematic budget. There are many more, there are many problems. However, time limits me to only addressing a few of the biggest elements of the room. Thankfully, John already addressed some of them. For starters, I already warned you that the mayor's pension POB plan would likely fail. Five months later, it has. The stock market has tanked, and we're now looking at a shortfall equal to about what the mayor claimed we were going to save on it. Next up, the mayor set up a principal paydown on the POB that does not pay down principal for a standard fixed-rate-style mortgage. Rather, roughly $80 million in paydown during the first several years was pushed back to the final 14 years of its terms. In other words, balloon payments. How big are the balloons? The annual POB debt service will more than double in FY '26 and so give rise to a proforma, $550 increase to the tax bill of the average assessed value home in Quincy, on top of whatever only to be expected other budget spending increases. In the meanwhile, Mayor Co continues to hire people, increase city spending, and so further worsen the city's already ongoing structural deficit. Further, there is an extent, $30 million problem. In the POB's official indenture agreement that was not provided to the council until a month after the POB offering went to market, the mayor signed off on committing taxpayers to fund an additional, as well as unprecedented, bond-use-only designated reserve fund, $30 million reserve fund within six years. In turn, such works out to an additional de facto $150 surcharge upon the average homeowner's tax bill for six years. The reasons for insisting upon the tax fund reserve? The city's stabilization fund reserves are woefully paltry, and the POB nearly doubled the city's debt load to the north of a billion. So what for the fact that the needed appropriations to so fund the reserve can only be approved by the city council? More importantly, this restricted reserve entails a significant not disclosed increase to the mayor's cost, to the mayor's POB plan. Instead, upon a review of last year's budget hearing video, Director of Municipal Finance, Eric Mason, just talked up things in the most general sort of way, and without any mention of the reserve as regards what turned out to be two separate but disingenuously camouflaged fund allocations. Such was wrong on so many levels. Granted, the mayor has the authority to negotiate the terms of the POB indenture. At the same time, at a minimum, he still should have come before the council as soon as possible to secure its approval to fund the designated POB use-only reserve before he signed off on the indenture agreement, but he did not. Instead, what happened sets, what happened instead baits only fair questions as to possible misrepresentations, as well as arguable misappropriation of funds by the administration. Further, the administration's not duly disclosed $30 million restricted reserve requirement additionally poses questions as to not only the validity of the council's vote to approve the POB authorization, but also your approvals of both last year's budget and this year's property tax rates, as all three are inexplicably intertwined. Accordingly, please note that all of you are going to be hit with an open meeting law complaint as regards the viability of your approvals of the POB ask, the FY '22 budget, and this year's tax rate increases. Also note that not duly approved actions of the administration impact this year's proposed budget, and thus, you all might want to tread lightly going forward as you review it, if not also table tonight's presentation by the administration till you can ponder my open meeting law complaint. And closing, do any of you have any questions of me? Okay, thank you very much for your time and consideration.
This is just for the public. This is for the public. We will begin deliberations afterwards.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
This is for the public. We will begin deliberations afterwards.
I know that, but that doesn't mean that someone couldn't table the deliberations. Thank you.
You're welcome to ask any councilor afterwards or contact them. Okay? Anybody wishing to speak on the FY '23 budget? Anyone wishing to come up and speak on the FY '23 budget? I'll ask it the third and last time. Anyone wishing to speak on the FY '23 budget? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion has been made. The public hearing is closed. We'll be reconvening at 6:45 for the Finance Committee meeting. I'm going to reconvene the Finance Committee of the Quincy City Council, and we're going to start with the first on the agenda, which is municipal finance. And I'm going to ask the Director, Eric Mason, to make his presentation.
Good evening, council. This is my third time giving this presentation, but my first time in person, so very good to see you guys all in person tonight. So tonight I'll be presenting, as the chairman said, an update and forecast on both revenues for going into FY 2023. So to start off, just to give an overview, revenues really come from three sources. In the city of Quincy, those three sources are the levy, state aid, and local receipts. Primary discussion tonight will be around what we call non-levy revenues, and those are state aid and local receipts. Local receipts make up about 10% and state aid about 15%. Levy is the discussion this body deliberates on when it comes to tax rate setting season. So when it comes to budget forecasting, those are the two variables we can identify and we know. So we'll discuss FY '22 recap, FY '23 outlook, and we're going to talk a little bit about some of the parameters that are going to impact these projections over time. So to start off, a recap of FY '22. We can see that local receipts have largely recovered. We have a personal property collection rate of 99.6%, a real estate collection of 98.5%. But there was also some unexpected revenues that came in. In particular, with the booming real estate market in Quincy, there was a lot of properties that had tax title issues, whose property values rose high enough to where people were able to purchase them and pay off that underlying tax obligation. And that resulted in over $300,000 in additional revenue. And then state aid was strong consistent this year. We collected all the state aid we were expecting, and there was even some different classifications of state aid that came in that we weren't originally projected for. As everybody's aware, ARPA and other federal and state programs have provided additional state revenue. Some of that wasn't being deliberated on last year when we structured the budget, so therefore, we didn't budget it with our revenue. So that acts as a net gain to the city. And to continue on that, we have 97.5% of all levies collected, and we're only about 88% of the way through the year. Meals tax has had some exceptional performance. We've already, we've collected, Meals tax gets sent to the city in quarterly payments, so we've only had three of those payments so far this year. And we've already collected over 100% of the projected Meals tax, including the two best quarters of Meals tax collections the city's ever seen. Obviously, during the pandemic, we all know that that was an issue that was hit very hard, and it makes up our third largest revenue source. So to see that recover is obviously a very strong economic sign. We are projecting it to finish about 135% of expected value. Building permits are $1.6 million over what they originally budgeted for. As we have new, as planning and inspectional services in the planning board and zoning board approve more projects, we will see that number rise. There was a little bit of a backlog that was caused by the pandemic and the general issues with supply chains, so I think we'll continue to see that growth over time. And we do see that similar trend across all license and permitting activity. Additionally, we received the reverter payment from FoxRock for $4.25 million for the development at Hospital Hill, so that was received under miscellaneous nonrecurring. As we look forward to FY 2023 forecast, to that budget, well, to the budgets upcoming, state aid's been very strong. State aid, as it makes its way through the state house, has increased 10% year over year. It's about a $5 million net increase that we weren't, a 10% increase in state aid is quite an abnormality, so it's, obviously, benefits our budget quite well, so it's good to see that. And that's as of today, and I believe the Senate is concluding its deliberation on that. So that seems to be a very firm number. Excise tax and building permits continue to have strong performance, and we expect that to continue. We have backlog, we have a backlog of units that are approved and permitted that with the shortage of building materials beginning to calm down a little bit, it's going to allow those buildings to be constructed, they'll come online and become part of the tax base. Excise tax, motor vehicle excise tax is our largest local receipt we collect. It's about $11 million. We've already collected 100% of that this year, and I continue to, and I would expect that to continue because we still have commitments outstanding. Hotel motel has begun to recover. It still has some distance to go. We're at about a 75% recovery, which puts us a little bit above state, a little bit above state averages, but Quincy does have a fairly robust hotel motel tax base traditionally, so there's still some space to recover, but it is, has been better performance than we saw over the last two fiscal years. And Meals tax, as mentioned earlier, is expected to continue its recovery into FY '23 and most likely post new record returns. As we continue down this, there's really two main takeaways when we look forward to FY 2023, is that revenues remain consistent with budget growth. We have a 7.7% increase in the budget, and we have 10% increase, we have a 10% increase in state aid. It's very likely that local receipts will be north of 10% by the time this year finishes out, so I'd expect that to remain consistent with our 7.7% budgetary increase. These, as I mentioned earlier, these non-levy revenues are expected to continue this strong performance, and this kind of transitions into the last point of the presentation, which is talking about the upcoming economic volatility, which has been very heavily discussed, especially in light of some of today's stock performances. But these non-levy revenues are primarily driven by personal consumption. And you know, if you think about it, somebody has disposable income, they can go out to dinner more, that increases Meals tax. More personal income, they buy more expensive cars, increases motor vehicle excise tax. Those are still strong performance, and we still have very strong metrics with those. Now, there's always discussion of nationwide inflation trends, and we all saw the 8.5% increase in inflation year over year. I think when we talk about that national level, it's important to remember that inflation's always been higher in the greater Boston area, and we haven't seen that, we have seen a dramatic increase, but not nearly as what we're seeing nationwide with these inflation increases. And when we couple that with the, with strong labor trends that we've seen in Quincy, it's likely that that robust labor force, that diverse labor force, will continue to be able to carry a lot of these personal consumption concerns. And we'll talk a little, and to close out, many of these revenues are tied very closely to what the Fed analyzes. As you can see to my previous point, well, we did see pretty dramatic inflation occur year over year earlier this year compared to the Boston metropolitan area. While it did increase, it wasn't as dramatic of an increase. And to close out the forecast as we look into FY 2023, one thing I want to pull out, and this is the Federal Reserve's long horizon forecast, is as we go into calendar year 2023 and beyond the calendar 2024, the Federal Reserve does expect inflation to normalize to about 3%, between 3% and 4%, with some, with some inflation indicators actually falling below 3%. And we do expect the labor for, we do project the labor force participation rate and unemployment to stabilize. And these are all good signs when we talk about revenue recovery as we move into fiscal year 2023. And I'd be happy to take any questions the council may have on revenues.
Any councils with questions? The chair recognizes Counselor Andronico.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Mason. I just wanted to double-check on, I think, the recap of this current fiscal year. It said Meals tax, we're on pace for 135% of expected, and the bullet point under just says building permits 1.6 mil over expected. I'm just curious, in dollar amount for Meals tax, how much over on pace are we?
About $500,000.
$500,000, okay. I just wanted to double-check. Thank you.
Any other councils? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve? Well, it's just, it's just the revenues, counselor. So there's actually no motion just yet to approve. But we might as well, then we might as well go right in. We'll leave you in the hot seat, and we'll put your, we'll move right into the municipal finance budget. Director, Director Mason.
Yes. So the only increase in the budget is a $50,000 contractual increase for the auditing of municipal services. That includes the, our basic financial statement audit, our CFA audit, and our management letter, in addition to, we're doing some additional audit on cash management and cash sharing. So that's reflecting that $50,000, otherwise, the lines are static.
Counselor Kane.
Just a quick question, Eric. What's going on in overtime?
We've had our fair share of COVID exposure this year, to be, to be honest, and we have, well, we do a lot of cross-training. The cross-training's not nearly where it should be. So when issues like that happen, and there's few people trained on necessary functions from warrants to payroll, it does dramatically increase. And our department functions as epicenter for a lot of the ERP issues the city deals with, so across a few different departments. They kind of all centralize municipal finance, so we have to have staff available.
So what you're saying is that people had COVID, they were out, and so you needed to use other people who needed to be compensated using excess overtime?
Correct, councilor.
Okay. And so where do these, where do those funds come from then if you overdraw in that account?
We do have breakage in my lines. Some of it's related to lead buybacks, some of it's related to salary wage temp. We should be able to cover it part of year in transfers.
Okay. And is there an anticipation of this happening going forward?
I would not expect, councilor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other councils? Counselor Liang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric, just a quick question. I noticed it first in your items since you're up in front of us today, and then I noticed it in a couple of other departments as well, that there is a $1 increase in some salary line items. Could you just explain to me what that is and why some salary line items are going up by a dollar?
So our maintenance system, our ERP, it actually brings it up to the fourth decimal point. When it talks about salaries, it brings it to the one penny of one penny. We have an imperfect fiscal year this year. There's 52.2 weeks this fiscal year, so some salaries are typed in 0000, and other salaries have some integers past that decimal point. So when you round to that point two of a fraction, sometimes it's just enough to make it round up $1 or keep it flat from the previous year.
Okay, and that's because everyone gets paid weekly, right? On a weekly basis?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, it just was odd when I saw it, so I just wanted to do clarification on it. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other councils? Seeing none, do I entertain a motion? Motion has been made to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mason. So you can, actually, you're going to stay right there for a couple of these items.
They're going to be up here for a little bit.
So don't go anywhere. Next item is retirements and pensions.
Retirement and pensions. This is the normal cost for the pension fund, as provided through the pension board. So normal cost is the expected liabilities generated from that year's operation related to the city. It doesn't have to deal, it's not part of the unfunded amount. Happy to answer.
Eric, I just have a question, if you could help educate me on this. I was looking through the booklet that we got when we got the information for the pension obligation bond, and in the first couple of pages, it breaks down principal payments from 2022 through to 2036, and the first principal amount on that is for a little over $4 million, and then for calendar year '23, it's a little over $5 million. So I'm just curious if you could clarify, is that, are those principal payment amounts in this budget here in front of us?
They would be in the debt service, so they wouldn't be in front of the retirement and pensions, but I believe while I'm up here, we're going to discuss long-term debt service, it would be part of that.
Okay, great. If you can dive into it a little bit more when we get to that, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other, any other councils? At this point, the chair would like to take a moment of privilege to ask a couple of questions. Eric, is that the actual number from the retirement board?
I believe so, that was what was provided to us, but I defer to the auditor if I'm incorrect in this.
Okay, and could I, a question to the auditor.
Okay. I know that we did receive a revised letter from Parac revising the appropriation, so that amount is actually $7,352,280.41. So it is, that line is overbudgeted by about $77,268.
I was unaware of the letter, I apologize. The best way to be budgeted is overbudgeted.
The letter came, I think it came towards the end of April, and then I had just received it recently.
Okay. Everything, Parac can sometimes be a little on the slow side to deliberate, but that would be a good cut.
Counselor, I think with this new information, obviously, there's room for a cut. I don't know if you would consider removing your motion and make a motion to affect the new number. So the motion would be to cut the, cut the line item, $77,260, counsel. We have a motion to make a cut of $77,260. On the motion, do I, okay, I'll ask, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Counselor, if you'd like to entertain another motion for the municipal finance budget?
Retirement and pension.
Retirement and pension. Retirement and pension as amended. We have a motion, Counselor McCarthy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the ayes have it. Thank you, and we'll move on. I think I missed one, reserve fund, and I know that came up in some discussions in the public hearing.
Yes, so the reserve fund will see the salary wage increase, and that has to do with the outstanding contract negotiations that the city's engaged in with the unions. We also see the reserve appropriation stabilization. That's broken down into $5.25 million that will be going to the pension volatility account. An additional $500,000 that'll be going into general stabilization. And then we are continuing our $250,000 contribution to OPEB, the OPEB stabilization
Counselor DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to, real quick, on the $3.8 million for the salary increase, is that for the cost of living possibly?
Yes, sir.
Increases that we have not anticipated the negotiations have been met yet?
Who defer negotiations status to Chief of Staff Walker?
Okay.
Mr. Walker.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, exactly, counselor. It's the same process we went through last year, where we set aside a lump sum with the anticipation of collective bargaining agreements being settled. We do not have, at this point in time, anything to report relative to that, other than on negotiations with all of our collective bargaining units are productive, positive, and we expect to have some of those wrapped up in the very near future.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Thank you, Eric. That's all, I just really wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, any other councils on the, on the reserve fund? Motion by President DeBona to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, move right on. Okay. Get that? All right, next, next is Eric, he's still up there. So unemployment compensation.
The same as it's been for the last several years, unemployment compensations are required. Number we carry, we usually stick around $100,000.
Motion has been made by Counselor Kane to approve. Do I hear any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the order passes. Okay. Next up is Medicare.
The Medicare assessment increased by the expected Medicare contribution rate that we're required to increase it by.
Motion to approve by Counselor Kane. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The ayes have it. Okay. Next one, debt service.
So the debt service reflects the obligations that have been discussed by this body and put forth by the administration for various capital improvement plans throughout the city. In specific, the pension obligation bond is included in here. I'm more than happy to field any specific questions on it, and I brought the debt book with me today.
Is, is, any questions, Counselor Liang?
Thank you. Just to go back to the pension obligation bond line item itself, so again, I'm just referencing the packet that was distributed to all of us back when it gave all the details for the pension obligation bond. And again, when I'm looking at the, the first couple of pages, when it breaks down the principal amount payments for the end of each calendar year, so the principal amount for 2022 was again a little over $4 million, principal for calendar year '23 a little over $5. And, you know, for the 2022 budget, it was a $9.5 million line item budgeted here for principal amount of 4.4. So we're looking at, you know, $5 million more in addition to the principal amount that was appropriated for that. So if you could explain where that was. And then for 2023, the principal amount payment for calendar year '23 is 5.2 million, or 5.3 if you round up, but the 23, fiscal year '23 requested is $15.6 million. So again, it's, based off the numbers I have in front of me, it just seems to be of me, it just seems to be a pretty large sum that I don't understand where it's going for the pension obligation line item when the principal amount is so much lower.
So that's how amortization functions in bond schedules, is amortization is paid in the forward. So, and this is true with any bond, actually including mortgages too. You have higher interest payments upfront, and lower principal payments upfront. Higher interest payments, lower principal payments upfront. And as you get further along the lifespan of the note, the principal payments become larger. The reason you see kind of some of that staggering and that effect is because of how public debt is sold. So public debt's not sold as one coupon. There's not one buyer of $475 million. It's several tranches. And in the first five years, you get very, very, very low interest rates because the bonds are uncallable. So in other words, the city cannot refinance that debt. That's very, very appealing to insurance companies that must maintain some sort of fixed income, some sort of coupon rate that will get off, they'll get off our bond. So they can, we can get very, very low interest rates upfront. Sometimes they're as low as 10 basis points, so 10% of 1%. But that doesn't affect the, what we call the blended rate, what that amortization is expressed over time. And that's actually outlined by the IRS. So what portion is interest, what portion is principal? Well, in individual years, you can have higher or lower interest rates. The IRS basically tells you blend that rate over time and then follow a traditional amortization schedule.
Okay, so I think maybe then I would just need to sit down with you and look through the breakdown, the breakout again, more specifically, because again, on here it has a principal amount, but it also has the interest rate, and the interest rate goes up over time on here.
The interest rate.
So it has here at the breakout, sorry to interrupt you, I just want to clarify what I'm looking at. It says, so it has the due dates, has the principal amount, has an interest rate, and then the yield percentage. And the interest rate percentage goes up over time?
Yes. Are you referring to each year has a higher interest rate compared to the, whatever the treasury was at that point of sale?
I don't think I'm understanding this.
So there's a blended interest rate. So that's the weighted average of every one of those years. So that becomes part of the bond. And then we pay these principal and interest payments in that prescribed fiscal year, and that's then divvied up between any member of holders. I think our first year of debt on this is actually held by like six different companies. I know the last year is held by about 15. I mean, they range from traditional investment firms, SMAs, which are individual investors. But we blend that rate together. That's how you get the 2.62% rate that the entire bond was. And that amortization schedule is based on that 2.6% rate, not what's paid off in that individual year. So there's, there's the buy side and the sell side too, and that creates a composite. So it's very hard to reflect what the interest rate was in individual year and relate it to what a blended bond schedule looks like.
But so, again, I apologize for not understanding what you're saying. You know this stuff really well. I'm trying to catch up with your knowledge here, which is, I think everyone can hopefully support the fact that it's hard for you to catch up with your knowledge on this. I just, I'm still not understanding, though, based off of what's in front of me, just the numbers that I'm looking at, what that, with that large of a gap, what that is paying for? If you're saying that's paying for interest, so in fiscal year '22, again, the principal amount is 4.4, right, and the budgeted amount was 9.5. So, you know, $5.5 million was just for the interest, you're saying, essentially?
For?
For the fiscal, so in the budget book, right, pension obligation bond is a line item for fiscal year '22, the budget was 9.5 million.
Correct.
Right? In the book that I have here that breaks out the information on the pension obligation bond, the calendar year 2022, says the principal amount is 4.4. So basically that tells me that 5.5 of that, right, is going to what?
Okay, I apologize. I think that's where the misunderstanding is. We budgeted 9.5 million. I'm not sure, with some level of uncertainty last year, we sold the pension bond on December 4th. We passed the budget, and we begin deliberations on May 17 of FY21. So we had to project we were going to fall in that range. Now, there's two, we could have taken the pension obligation bond and induced the first year payment in FY23. Instead, we chose to avoid that interest expense for that first year of liability and make a preemptive interest payment at the beginning of the year, at the end of this year. It's June 30th, so beginning or end. That's going to end up being about $4.4 million. But that was paid immediately, or sorry, that was incurred immediately, and that will likely be paid by the end of this year. So that line is.
And it's fiscal year?
In FY22, correct, yes. So that's why it's not reflected in this 630, 2022 number, because that was made simultaneously to the, to the note. And that's a strategy that's employed by our FAs and our underwriters to reduce interest exposure while you're waiting for that one year to come around. I equate it to this, like if you, Counselor, I know with your background, probably with business loans, you can take the point up front, or you can take the point on the back. We effectively took the point up front, so it doesn't accrue interest over the life of this note.
Okay, so then how, how does that break down with the fiscal year '23 that's being requested of the 15.6 million, with the principal amount payment for calendar year '23 being 5.2 million?
For 5.2, so 630, 2023, that 15.668 million, that's for the upcoming year, for the year we're going into. The 5.2 million is, would be for next fiscal year, for 2024.
So the principal payment for 5.2, so let's say 5.3, right, just rounding up here because it's 5.275 for calendar year '23, you're saying that's going to be covered in fiscal year '24?
That's 630, 2024, would be for fiscal year '24.
What number did you just come up? The 630?
630, 2024, would be fiscal year 2024.
I'm not understanding what you're referencing.
You're referencing a principal payment.
Yeah.
Of 5.3 million. If you look to the column to the immediate left, it says 630, 2024.
I see. I think I'm looking at something else that you're not looking at. Could you just, can I just show them?
Yeah.
Because this is the principal payment. And so you're saying there's something to the left of it. I don't see anything. Do you understand what I'm saying? Like, I think I'm looking at something else that you're not looking at. So this is what I'm referring to. I wish I could, like, show this. I'm not to. You're saying, so this is calendar year '23, and then this is the principal amount payment. So I'm wondering if that's the principal payment for 2023, what the difference is for, what's requested for fiscal year?
So this is the, reference this material. I assume this, but this is a December 15 deal. This is the actual schedule we have to follow.
Okay.
Where, so you see the.
I'm sure we have a copy of this somewhere, but could you send it over just so we have it readily available? So you're, and then this is, okay, I see. Okay, thank you. That's, this is how, I would love to get a copy of that. Again, I'm sure we have it somewhere, but if you could get it over, have it readily available. Thank you. Yeah, you just showed me exactly where it's going. So, thank you. No, I appreciate it.
Any other, any other questions? The chair at this time will take a moment of privilege to ask a question of the director. Eric, is the, the DIF, the money for the DIF included in this, in this debt service?
So it is. Per Chapter 40Q, which outlines, which outlines how DIF is processed, what the state requires is that we have a separate fund established. It's in the city of Quincy, it's Fund 0200, which records the revenue that's generated in the downtown. And as those receipts come in, well, we budget for that initial debt service because it's still part of general obligation bonds. We then subsequently move the obligation of that, of the DIF into that O200 fund, and that, that's what pays for it.
So basically, when we take a vote in the fall, which usually comes in in the fall, that money is already what we appropriated now, and we're moving it. So it's no new money or anything like that?
Yeah, so we appropriate, and this is actually something I've discussed with our independent auditor, Jim Powers, a few times, because I've always been perplexed on, why is it structured that way? And it's actually verbatim how the law's written, and I'm not somebody who can really argue.
No, I was going through the council order that we, that we do at the end of the budget, and I was wondering why it wasn't there. So you're saying it's because it's a state law that we have to do it that way?
Yeah, so it looks very weird because when you, when you look at, if you were to review our page for our tax recap, you'll see a raise and appropriate, and then you also see what's called a B2, which is interfund-related, and that gets reflected as interfund-related transfer.
All right, now I understand it. I thought I had a huge cut.
My apologies.
Any other councilors? At this time, I'll entertain a motion on, on the long-term debt service. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. We have a motion to approve. All in favor? All opposed. Hearing none. We'll go on to short-term debt.
It's based upon the same schedule, except instead of bonds, these are the city's bond anticipation notes.
Motion has been made to move approval. Any councilors on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Mason. You'll be back soon, but for right now, you're off the hook. We're going to go to the next, next item on the agenda, which is assesses budget. Colleen Neely. We have a motion to approve, but on the motion, I'll give Colleen a chance to come up, and she wants to say something about her budget?
If you want to approve it without me speaking, that's fine, but I don't mind speaking. I have a little speech here, but.
I don't, well, if you don't have, if, you know, it's your chance to shine.
Okay. All right, you guys can approve it then.
Yeah, okay.
I just had a baby. I'm tired. So if you can approve it, that would be great.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Pamoche.
Thank you. We're laughing and we're joking, but the reason why we're all comfortable with approving your budget is because you do a phenomenal job. So it's not because we're not digging deep. Counselor Kane, I'm sure made that motion because, for the same reason, we all don't, we'd love to hear what you have to say, but we don't need to hear it because we see the work you do every day.
Thank you.
And we think you do an incredible job, so keep up the good work.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks, Gus.
Okay. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Seeing none. Motion carries. Thank you, Colleen. Next on the agenda is the treasurer-collector's budget. In place of FDI, Eric, who's, who oversees the collector treasurer, because of a health matter, is unable to attend. So Director Mason is up to talk on it. Motion has been made to approve. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing, seeing none. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Counsel Dronico.
Mr. Mason, I was hoping you could just clarify the $50,000 increase in the communication line item.
Yes, that's due with increased costs related to both printing and mailing out, stuff related to collections, mostly tax rate bills, water bills, sewer bills.
Any other, any other councilors? Motion is on the table to approve. All in favor? All opposed. Seeing none. You're all set. But next item on the agenda is tax title.
Here, one more.
Motion has been made to approve. Any councilors on the tax title? Counsel Pamoche.
Good evening, Mr. Mason.
Good evening, Counselor.
I don't have my budget book in front of me. I apologize. But can you just go over what this is?
So this would be if the city opted to do a tax title sale to clean up any, would be any properties that have outstanding tax liabilities. They have to be three years old, but are in the tax title process. This would be the money needed to do all the publications related to that.
And are we anticipating going out? Because I know we only go out every couple of years. I think it's been about three or four years. We're looking to go out pretty soon.
I would say we are looking out pretty soon. We have been advised by some of our financial advisors, that'd probably be best to do.
Okay. And when we do that, do we, maybe you don't know, do we, they're auctioned, do we auction them in a block, or do we auction them individually?
We can do both. With a city our size, it's usually recommended we do it in block, but there's actually not like a general consensus in public finance whether, which one you should do. Smaller towns are almost always told to auction individually. A very large city like Boston, they'd be like, do it in blocks, because it would be super expensive to do them individually. We're kind of in that mezzanine area.
So the reason why I raise this and kind of wanted to ask some questions about it, I would like to learn more about how we do that. If the city is going to go out, I know it's an executive function, but I would ask that the, the council be advised as to when the auction is, or when the decision's being made to put it out, so that we could maybe have a little bit of a chat about it. I don't know if you've seen some of the recent work that's been done about how abusive some of the corporations that purchase tax title have been. Massachusetts is one of maybe only four states wherein which, if, I'm just going to give a hypothetical, your, your house is worth $100,000. You've paid it off, right? You're a senior citizen, right? You paid off your $100,000 home. You missed your tax bill for a couple of quarters, maybe a year, four quarters, maybe three years, 12 quarters. Your tax bill's $100 a quarter, so you've missed $1,200 in taxes. The city then, and this happens all across Massachusetts, the city then goes, auctions it off, a giant corporation, not giant, but a corporation buys it. This is what they do. They then go, and because they're buying a municipal tax lien, they have preferential standing, and they get, they get access to, if you want to call it special laws, that allow them to more quickly kick the person out and take possession of the house. You would think what is fair is if the person has $100,000 in equity in their home, owes $1,200 in taxes, you would think it would be fair that the person, the corporation who buys the tax lien, would get the $1,200 paid and then give the senior citizen the $98,800 back. But Massachusetts is one of the few states in the country that allows that corporation to take all $98,000 in equity. They kick the person out, and that person gets nothing, zero. They become homeless, and they get zero return from their equity, even though they only owed $1,200. They just lost $98,000. So there's been some recent examination of this in the legal community about the legality of this, and I don't know if the legislature's looking at something relative to this. But from my perspective, I don't want to be a part of that worst-case scenario. I mean, agreed that people who don't pay their taxes should have to pay their taxes. They haven't paid their taxes, the city should get, I mean, we get pennies on the dollar usually for the tax liens. So if the city, somebody owes the city $10,000, we'd probably be lucky if we got $2,500 for that tax lien. And you would think the profit there would be $7,500 for the person who buys the lien, but it's not. It's the complete equity that's built up in the house. So I, I would like to have a, more of a discussion about that when it comes up, so just ask some sort of notification, come to the council. We, I don't want to aid and abet this worst-case scenario from happening to any resident in Quincy, even if they're late on their taxes. I mean, there's, there's penalties, and then there's, you know, exorbitant penalties that people shouldn't pay. So that's my piece. Thanks.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Any other councilors? Seeing none. All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Mason. Okay, next up, Catherine Holvin. Motion to approve. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor? All opposed? Order carries. Thank you, Catherine. Okay, next item on the agenda. We have, we have the legal department and our city solicitor, Jim Timmons.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. I will echo the comments of my, the immediate predecessor, Mrs. Logan. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I have the good fortune. I often tell the fire chief and the police chief that I manage licensed attorneys and one very capable paralegal, so there's not a lot to do. And you'll see, I think that the auditor's report kind of bears out anything I might say, that for the past three years, 2021 and 22, our budget really hasn't moved at all. So I'm happy to answer questions and then leave time for you to probe the human resources department and the goings on there.
Motion has been made to approve. On the motion, Counsel Dronico.
Thank you for, for joining us. I had a quick question on the outside council line item. I know from '21 to '22, there was an increase of $100,000. Then on the contracted line item, another increase of $100,000, and it looks like that's maintained through this year. I was wondering if you could just speak to that. Has that been helpful? Has that made a difference? Are we still using that entire budget within the line item?
Well, part of what's going on about, five or eight years ago, the mayor took an approach with a snow budget, that he was trying to budget for what was actually going on, rather than just coming back at the end of the year. Well, the legal budget is similar relative to judgments, and then in general, relative to attorney's fees and the type of work we do, it has to be paid for. And I've ended up, the past few years, having attorneys wait. And I've ended up, the past few years, having attorneys wait to get paid. So, we looked at some realistic projections. I spoke with the chief of staff about it, and we feel that this number is appropriate, and that what it will do is, I mean, obviously, we're not going to spend the money unless there's something coming, but we did have a couple of cases come in that required us to hire outside counsel. There's a very serious case that occurred down in Squanam, you may recall, where a gentleman was killed, and there were a number of city officials who have been sued, some of them individually, and we've had to hire multiple outside lawyers just because of the nature of the case. So, we were projecting for that reason a certain cost, and the hope is that at the end of the year, money will be returned. That's happened a couple of prior years where we haven't used the full legal budget.
Thank you. Counsel Pamoche.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Timmons.
Good evening, Counselor.
What's the difference between outside counsel and contracted?
And contracted?
Yeah.
The outside counsel, what we've had is attorneys who come in when a case that we aren't anticipating arises. The contracted line is a line that we've always carried for, like, I just had a case come in where I needed to hire an outside lawyer due to a conflict issue, so we've always had an amount available for hiring outside lawyers. And then, a case came in recently about, it's an eminent domain taking appeal, and we know what the numbers are, and it's probably going to be a quick in-and-out type case. So, that's the type of case where we use the contracted lawyer, just to avoid making any mistakes.
So, is that, so is the difference, outside counsel is you're farming out the case to an outside attorney who's doing their own thing, whereas contracted is you have someone with perhaps a specialty that no one in the office has, that's on a contract, that you're kind of overseeing more closely than you would outside counsel?
Right. Attorney Mike Maxey, the comp lawyer, he's a person of that nature.
Okay. And Attorney Bacon is somewhere in there as well, right? Because I think we are...
I don't think he's in...
Okay.
Not in my budget, no.
Okay.
He was an assistant, but then left the office.
Okay. Because I think, because we're paying him out of the Affordable Housing Trust fund to advise us. I thought we were paying like half his salary, or some portion of his salary, and then the rest was in contracted somewhere, but nevertheless. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other counselors on the motion? We have a motion on the floor to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none? Okay, on to the next item, which is going to be workers' compensation, so... So, this is the Timmons?
The comments I would make are similar to my prior ones. This has been fairly stable, and has been because of Attorney Mike Maxey and then Laura Power in my office. Some of you are up there, you know Laura. It's been well managed. We've actually reduced the amount we pay an outside consultant who administers the bills. The extent that there's any vacillation, it's been primarily this year. Folks were out injured, and the injured pay line is up a bit, but that's just a factor that you can't necessarily predict. For the most part, this has been very stable. I think there's a strong work ethic across the board among the city workers, and then Mike Maxey does an excellent job of managing claims when they come in.
Any counselors on the item? Counsel Andronico.
Just looking at the workman's comp expenditure in the percent used, we're up to, for this fiscal year, 80% of the...
I may interrupt, just to ask, but I...
Yes.
Yeah, if you could speak up a bit, sorry.
We're up to 80% of the workman's comp budget used for this year. Is that expected to be up to roughly 100% by the end of the current fiscal year?
Still not getting you. Say that again, though?
The workman's comp line item for the current fiscal year of $653,000. Just checking the percentage used thus far, we're at about 80%. Is that expected to bump up to roughly 100% by the end of the current fiscal year?
Oh, absolutely, because we have a couple more months, and we have, there are people out. There's no question that will happen. I think the auditor wants to contribute.
So, currently, they've already exceeded 100% of that budget, based on the last two payrolls. So, right now, they've expended $681,543, and I believe there's probably about almost six more payrolls left. So, they will, you know, continue to exceed that amount.
Understood. Just wanted to double-check the entry there. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve on that? Motion has been made to approve. Any other counselors on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it? Move on to the next item. Thank you, Solicitor Timmons. Oh, court judgment, you're up. I got too many papers in front of me. Solicitor Timmons. Motion has been made to approve. On the motion, Counsel Andronico? Oh, just a motion to approve. On the motion, Counsel Pamoche.
Jim, has it always been two separate lines, judgments and settlements? Has it always been two separate lines, judgments and settlements?
Yes, it has.
All right. And this is not based on historical numbers, but based on an assessment of pending litigation and claims?
No, it's not, only because we wouldn't be able to practically project for an entire year. This is an historical and a kind of a practice-based, like, it's been the practice every year that I've been here to fund it for some certain. And the one little misperception is, is that you can overspend both of these accounts, you cannot. The judgment account is the only one that can be quote "overspent," close quote, but all that really means is if a judgment comes in, it's going to have to be paid. So, we made a determination five or, well, I guess it was after the 2021 budget, we made a determination to increase the settlement account, because we used to have a number of, you know, you have claimants from people. This particular year, we had a very vigorous pothole claim environment, you know, for like three or four months, and so you need to be able to address those.
Seems like that should come out of Al's budget, but...
Uh-huh.
Okay.
So, it's, while you asked whether we've projected based on past history, it's just turned out, I've been able to manage the settlement account and commit it under, at or under the 300. Sometimes that means telling people that they're going to have to wait to get their claims fully resolved.
I like the optimism of settlements versus judgments, in terms of how the, there's a lot more here for settlements and a lot less for judgments. I like the optimism that you're going to win all the cases, and you're going to settle the ones you think you would lose.
Well, that's how a good lawyer approaches stuff, right? So, that's no secret. We've been lucky. It's interesting, when judgments come, they come big and they hit hard, but for the most part, we've avoided that type of environment. And this year has been another one of those years so far.
Knock on wood.
Thank you, that's correct.
Any other counselors? We have a motion on the floor, so, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none? We'll move on to the next item. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Next is human resources. We have the Director of Human Resources, Patty McCowen. Motion to approve. We have a motion to approve. Anyone on the motion? Counsel Andronico.
Patty, thank you for joining us. We appreciate it. I had a question just on the contracted line item. It looks like year-to-date, you spent a little over a quarter of that item. I was curious, I imagine it might be similar to Mr. Timmons's answer, but just, what is the contracted line item? Have you used it in years past? What we have in front of us is just for current fiscal year.
Yeah, so that line item is for a number of different things. One of them being our employee assistance programs that are paid out of that, so we have several months of invoices still waiting to be paid out of that. The other thing is our outside labor council, which we use for our collective bargaining agreement, union negotiations, which we're, you know, have been ramping up the last several months and will continue for the rest of the fiscal year, so I do anticipate using most of that money out of that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Counsel McCarthy.
Good evening, Patty. Really no questions, just a comment. I want to thank you and your staff for the last couple of years. I know we've had Molly up here, Health Services, and I know the whole administration did a great job, but I know human resources had a tremendous amount of pressure and questions in dealings with Man and Health and everything that goes behind the scenes, and I know you've done a heck of a job, and I know the administration knows how valuable you are to be here, so I just want to thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, any other questions? Seeing no other questions for counselors, we have a motion on the floor to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none? We'll move on. And you're right back up here again, Patty. Next is health insurance. Motion has been made to approve. And on the motion, the chair will take a moment of privilege. Patty, I noticed that that went up much more than it did last year. Does that have something to do with COVID, or?
COVID is still quite an unknown factor in terms of the healthcare costs. As you can imagine, with COVID, it's hard to project what the healthcare costs are going to be. A number of things have kind of gone into that. We had a 9% rate increase for our active plans this year, which, as you may recall, we had the same 9% rate increase last year as well. We've had some increases in the enrollments on the plans, and we've had, in terms of our claims, we've had some large claims, which have come through what they call ongoing large loss claims. So, those have increased about 25%. The budget overall for the health insurance went up 6%, so some of those increases have been offset by the fact that, you know, there's been changes in the contribution rates for this year, so the city is paying less for the HMO plan as well as the PPO plan. And we've also have our Medicare plans in here as well, which tend to have a little bit lower rate increases. So, we've had some increases and some offsets, which has resulted in a 6% increase.
So, that's reflected in $57 million, is the 6% increases. Okay, thank you, thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve. Counsel Pamoche.
Good evening, Patty.
Good evening.
Two questions. The first, the tuition reimbursement, is that for a specific person in your department, or is that citywide?
That's citywide. That's through the QPEA union, so we have $1,000 in the budget for that, for people to request reimbursement for tuition.
Seems like a small amount. Is it that people don't know about it, or?
People should know about it, it's part of the union contract. So, some years, we use it all, some years, we don't use a lot.
Huh. Yeah, it seems like, I mean, we employ a lot of people, and $1,000 tuition, it seems we'd all benefit from people advancing education.
Right.
Okay. But why fund it if you're not spending it? I mean, it's not, it's not on you. And the second is, I just wanted to ask, a couple of years ago, we went from Harvard Pilgrim over to Blue Cross. I don't even know who makes that decision, but has that, has that been a good thing? I mean, has that financially, has that panned out the way you anticipated it to?
I believe so. And so, that was back in 2018, we switched from the GIC, you know, which had a number of plans underneath it, to Blue Cross Blue Shield.
I guess I was literally just talking about my health insurance plan. I had Harvard Pilgrim.
He was everybody else had half a pilgrim.
Yeah, so we went from GIC, I remember being concerted at the time, because it's almost like, you know, when you get a loan, you get a teaser rate, and it's like, oh, but then they jack it up. So, it seems like the cost savings that we anticipated and our ability, I think one of the benefits were, that you spoke about, was that we would get better customer service, because Blue Cross was going to dedicate one person to, who could specifically handle Quincy's issues. So, has that, you've been pleased with that?
I've been very pleased, and we have actually two people that, you know, focus solely on Quincy. We have an account executive and account representative. They've been fabulous to work with, and we've rolled out a vision plan as a result of that, which has been very popular with our employees. So, we've been very happy with the service that we receive from them. They've been very proactive in terms of wellness programs, which are kind of still new for the city of Quincy, but the overall goal is to sort of get people into healthier lifestyles. So, they've been very proactive in promoting a lot of those activities for us, things that we haven't been accustomed to, but are beneficial in the long run for all of us.
And are we, is it a contract that we have? Is there like a renewal, or is it annual?
It's, well, it's an annual renewal, but we have a six-year PEC agreement, which is going to carry us through fiscal year '24.
Okay.
And at that point, then, we will look into what our next step is going to be.
Okay, but so far, so good.
Very good.
All right, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right now, we have a motion on the floor to approve, to approve the health insurance. Do I hear any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, Patty. Okay, moving right along, next one on the agenda. Quincy Fire Department.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Chief Jackson?
I want to stay.
You might have to not walk too far. No, I'm giving him a chance to come up, and then I'll take your motion. Okay. There is a motion to approve.
Who made that motion? I owe someone lunch.
Any, Counsel Harris. So, on the motion, Counsel Pamoche, and then Counsel Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Counselor.
We almost did this without you. You were in the hall, we were just going to go forward, but then you came in, so...
I did my best, I said, keep talking to Jim.
Yeah. Thank you for all the work that you've done and that the...
Thank you for the support, thank you.
The fire department, I know it's been a tough, tough couple of years. It's been a tough couple of years for us. I can't even imagine how tough of a couple of years it's been for you and the fire department. I mean...
It's been pretty weird, no doubt about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think I ask you this question every year, but where are we in terms of staffing, and how does that compare to where you think we should be?
Staffing is good, staffing is actually appropriate. As far as the COVID concern, it's just, we've never really gotten rid of it, just given so many people living in such close quarters all the time, it's, we just, something that we're not able to shed. And you can see in the overtime line, that reflects it. But, you know, the staffing, the mayor's been very good about keeping our staffing levels up. I think it's totally appropriate right now, but thank you.
And do we have, do we have new recruits in the pipeline?
We actually, there's a grant in the pipeline that we're waiting to hear about in July, and it's for 16 members, and it would be through the federal government, and it would cover their salaries 100% for the term of three years. So, hopefully, that's something that pans out in July, and if that's the case, yeah.
And if that, and if that happened, would we add those positions, or would we use that money to offset existing positions?
Would be adding positions, yeah.
Okay. And I know, similar to the police department, it's like a game of whack-a-mole, you've got to figure out who you think's going to be retiring, and, you know, get a class up, because it's not like you can just put an ad in the newspaper and say, hiring, you know, firemen, and then the guy walks through the door, and he's like, I'm all trained, ready to go.
Right, right.
It's like this lead time, so if you know people are retiring. So, do you, what's the short-term future look like? Do you think we're going to be pretty level?
Retirement's, yeah, pretty level indeed. As a matter of fact, our business manager, Chris Fulon, and I were just talking about this, retirements over the next few years, what were we saying, Chris? Just like maybe three or four? Yeah, and it's, there's always the unexpected few that come out of the woodwork, you know?
Right. So, we're in a pretty good position personnel-wise?
I'm sorry?
We're in a good position personnel-wise currently?
Yes.
And that's keeping in mind, and that's taking into account the growing population?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, and I'm sorry, I think I misspoke, as far as putting new members on and putting in new positions. We'd be hiring to fill positions that are currently there.
Okay.
For people that have retired.
Right, right, right.
Injuries and not coming back, you know? Injuries and not coming back, you know?
Right, yeah, I took that from what you said.
Okay, all right, yep.
And what about where we stand on a ladder truck for West Quincy?
It's in the works.
Yeah.
It's definitely in the works. As a matter of fact, we're in the process of procuring a truck from Two Rivers, Wisconsin. There's been a nationwide search for a ladder truck that's under 11 feet 2 inches, and it's tough to come by. It's very, very difficult to come by. So our mechanics went out to Wisconsin a couple of weeks ago and put eyes on this truck, and it's in pristine condition. These guys took really, really good care of it. So we'll hopefully be picking that up in August, and that can make its way over to West Quincy.
Wow, I love it. That's, it's both humorous and appreciated, yeah. And for those who don't know, it's that there's restrictions on the building.
Yeah.
Can only fit so much, so.
Yeah, and it's a Canary Yellow truck, so it's going to be going through a paint job, I think.
Nice, nice. I like it. It's special, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, that's, I mean, that's a terrific job, right? So rather than saying, hey, we need to build a new fire station to fit a fire truck, it's like, we go and look for a fire truck that'll fit the station.
Yeah, yeah.
I like it.
Comes ready to move, right.
I like it, I like it. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Yang.
Hey, Ms. Chairman. Counselor Pamucci asked the question I was going to ask about staffing, because I noticed in the overtime line, no, yeah, the overtime line item, how much you had to go over, obviously just, again, for obvious reasons, right?
Yeah.
And just the number of staff that is required, and I'm really glad to hear all the answers that you gave and to hear that there's going to be more capacity. And, you know, we can't add to any line items. I noticed that even, given the overage, you came in with a reduction compared to last year, right? And so I would hope that that's because, again, we are able to bring more folks on, get you the covers that you need, and, yeah, to your point, Counselor Pamucci, it's a game of whack-a-mole, right? You don't know who is going to be coming off. I mean, sometimes you can predict it to an extent, right? But other times, you know, due to unforeseen circumstances, folks are leaving. So, you know, again, we can't add to anything. I would love to give you the resources you need and appreciate that you still came in, you know, lower than you did last year on that line item for overtime, and look forward to your department's continued growth, because I know that we need those services. I did have a second question, though, and that's for the PC technician line item for $63,000. And as of May 13th, when the year-to-years were sent over to us, it hasn't been spent to date. Is that something that's spent as an alum sum at the end of the year?
I'm sorry, which line is it?
For the PC technician line item.
Oh, yeah, yep.
It is, okay.
What was the question?
I was just wondering if that's something that's spent in alum sum at the end of the year or how that's spun down?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Chairman, it looks the auditor has a response to that.
Auditor?
C-technician position. So that position, they're currently, I'm assuming they're going to start interviewing for that position, and they had funded it in fiscal year '22 with hopes of starting the position earlier than it had originally.
Correct.
Gotcha, okay, great. No, I remember we had pretty significant conversations about improving the IT systems that we have, given, again, just the amount of work that all of you have to do. The last thing you should worry about is sort of on the back end, right, technology, and sort of how to communicate all of that, just as far as recording information goes. And so I know we, again, had discussed in coordination with IT, improving the services we have across the city, so I'm happy to see that it's budgeted in here for that, too.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Administrator, for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. President DeBono.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, thank you for coming up here tonight, and I appreciate all your hard work, all the firefighters, and the commitment and dedication to the citizens of Quincy. You guys have done a great job over the past year dealing, obviously, with the COVID. I think one of the things I saw in the paper as well, and I've had you and Lieutenant Glenn up here previously over the last few years, is the opioid epidemic, obviously. How are we doing with some of the Narcaning? How are the cases besides COVID, are we doing in the last year?
They're, they're not waning at all, put it that way, but everything's been going fine. We keep up on our training, and everybody gets the service that they need, but unfortunately, with COVID coming in, you see even more of that stuff. I don't know if it's people not having access to the in-person meetings or whatever, I'm not really sure what the reason is, but you do see that go up as well, unfortunately, you know?
I, you know, I know it's been tough out there, obviously, with, you know, you have to keep protective, and you also have to have the mask and all that other stuff. So I did read in some papers, and over the years, I've had you guys in here just to elaborate a little bit, and hopefully, maybe in the future down the road, we'll have you back in here just to talk a little bit more about safety.
Sure.
It's been tough because COVID's been, you know, really on our topic for the last two-plus years here. It's kind of overruled almost everything and superseded, but we-
It has.
It really has, and hopefully, we can, we're back in person. I'm lucky to have this, rather than be on Zoom, but-
Normal, yeah.
You know, but thank you for your hard work. I want to, you know, thank Tom Bowes, your president, over there for 792, back there. I appreciate all his help, you guys, and thank you for everything you guys do in the city. And if you need anything else, please feel free to give us a call or give me a call.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? I'm just going to take a quick moment of privilege. It's the chair. Chief, thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you.
It's been done over the last couple of years, and the times we're in is very tough. And I'm very happy to say, 35 years ago, we tried to stop the ladder truck from going out of West Quincy. At the time, we had a mayor who wanted to also close Wallaston Fire Station, a couple of other fire stations around the city, and we were able to block a lot of it. But that was something we weren't able to block, so I, I guess, everything comes around in a circle.
Yeah, that's right.
And there's no question with the population increases, with what the fire, the demands on the fire service in Quincy, that we should be looking to put all those things back.
Yeah, I agree.
And so you have my enthusiastic support over that.
Thank you.
And thank you, Chief, and thank you to all the members who are here tonight and all the great work they do, they do to keep the citizens of Quincy safe. So thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Awesome. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Chief, thank you. Okay, we're down to our last item on the agenda. Plant, Mr.? Okay, we have a motion to approve. Absolutely, and we'll go around. We'll start with Counselor Yang. Counselor Andronico, Kamuthi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I am very enthusiastic to support your department this year, and I will just acknowledge that, you know, I think when I first started six years ago, we had quite a very lengthy dialogue at times when it came to your budget, and I'll just say, just even in the last year alone, how much we've worked together on just one project, right? One thing that I'm really passionate about with the language access. I think the opportunity to work with folks that you manage with the planning board and then, you know, your staff and the team with this, this language access project, I mean, I think your staff, they've all demonstrated this budget's weight in spades. It really, it's phenomenal, the amount of work that they're committed to putting into, again, just one project, let alone all the projects that are happening concurrently across the city. And, you know, to my colleagues, I will just, you know, make a pitch to ask for support of this. You'll see a huge bump in a line item under contracted, and $300,000 of that $90,000 is going towards a doubling of a language access program that a number of staff members, particularly led by Melissa Pond, who, even in herself, frankly, is worth this amount in spades, has increased access significantly in just a small amount of time when this project is still in its infancy, right? And it's accessing not just for, you know, planning board meetings, but for zoning board, when we need to send notices out to our constituents to make sure that they're attending meetings that we need to notify them on. Just the other night, when we had a public meeting in here and we had interpreters available on-site, you know, that was all through this line item as well. And again, that's just in its infancy, and it's already been implemented in conjunction with some of the major departments that are front-facing most of the time, such as the fire department, the police department. I can go on and on about, again, just the value of that one project itself, let alone everything else that I've seen. This department's just soaring as far as success and commitment to the community, particularly when it comes to so many changes happening in a very quick, it seems, amount of time, right? Access and notification and engagement, I mean, it's all so important, but participation is just as important. And your department has made that just so possible in the last year, and I'm so excited to see that grow and, you know, sort of grow and have its own legs, right? And be even more successful. And that's rippled out as well, right? Folks are already paying attention to this community in so many ways, which is giving us the opportunity to grow, but this has gained so much traction. It's won the city awards that I don't know, you know, folks know about, but your department let me know that, you know, on the national level, just from that one program, the city hasn't won numerous awards on that, right? And so other cities are also looking to emulate what you've done here, what Melissa has done here with this work. And so it just, again, for so many reasons, but just for that one, too, in particular, I wholeheartedly support your project, department, I mean, and budget. And want to, again, and I know to you I sound like a broken record, but I cannot acknowledge enough Melissa's work and your partnership and teamwork with her and leading her to really make this so successful. So thank you so much, and, yeah, just wanted to put that out there that I wholeheartedly support that, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you very much. It's through your work as well, and the mayor's understanding that we have to, we have to do as good a job as we can making language-accessible information available to the citizens of the city. So the, it's, it's, it is interesting. We started off with, I think, a split of money between CDBG and some dollars that we got in our first budget. We added the $150,000 last year, and we're looking to add another $150,000 this year. It is something that, once you open that door, you crack that door, well, you know, we have had great success. There's some equipment to be purchased, et cetera, but also the contacts that we've made with all these language, you know, outside, outside folks that can help us hit the ground running like quarry, and as they were here the other night, as people that understand. So our goal is to build this. Our goal is to make sure that all our citizens have equal access. That's, that goes a lot, it says a lot for this council, it says a lot for the administration, understanding that making language accessibility a priority and also the cart services that goes with this as well. So thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, Counselor Andronico.
Thank you, Mr. Fassies. Thank you for joining us.
Very good.
I had a question about the operations supervisor dash econ dev line item. I'm just looking for current fiscal year. Looks like we've expended about 41% of that line item. Are we expected to spend up to 90% of that this year?
I have an opening. I have five postings right now out there, not all on this budget. I have a few on the federal side as well. What we're running into, frankly, is planners are a hot job. Tell your kids to be planners if they want to work in government. Boston put out a RFP for 14 planners last week, so it's a very competitive market. We are, we feel very good that we're going to get some responses. We've already picked up a couple of responses, so that's going to be breakage, if you will, at this point, and/or, you know, but that's last year's budget. Next year's budget, I fully expend, I fully expect to expend that, but that was just kind of moving pieces, something that had moved on, so.
Understood.
That's where we are, and for the most part, I'll echo the sentiment that you had for Patty. She's doing a great job helping us get these, get these jobs addressed, so that's-
Thank you. I did have another question. I was curious if anyone in the department this year was paid out with funds from the American Rescue Plan?
No, not through the plan itself. The federal side of the House is paid through HUD money. The, the rest of the planning, if you will, pure planning is paid directly out of the line items that you see here, the general fund.
Correct. Did you have anyone leave the department this year that then took a position that was paid by American Rescue Plan funds?
Excuse me?
Did you have anyone leave the planning department this year that then went on within the city to be paid out by American Rescue Plan funds?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure that there wasn't a portion. Perhaps the auditor could speak to that.
Or maybe Mr. Walker. I'm not sure that might be a better suited question for him.
Mr. Walker?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Counselor. There was a position, a person in the planning department that was transferred out of the planning department to a specialty role, being funded out of our funds currently, that is explicitly for tracking and applying for and monitoring and doing all the due diligence relative to the federal infrastructure bill. The mayor thought it was appropriate to have some staff just dedicated to that in this disposition. Person in the planning department is now overworking on those federal grants, which we fully expect to be paid for, and then some based upon the quality of the work that comes out of our grant application. As you probably know, there are hundreds of federal grants available now based upon the federal infrastructure bill, so we expect that, that to come back to us at some point within the next year or two. And on the overall, I know this is something that you've brought up a couple of times, Counselor, you know, between the budget, between the tax rate and getting everything straightened away, you know, we are still working on a full report for this council on federal spending. We expect well before the break for the summer that we're going to have that available for everyone to take a look at line by line on what the federal spend has looked like this year.
I appreciate it. Mr. Fassies, thank you for-
I understand what you mean now.
I understood. Thank you for the due diligence on that answer, and I pledge, I sort of do have a question directed, again, I think, to Mr. Walker on this. Does it take nine months to put a presentation or a notification for us? We've passed two resolutions on this. I was just curious if, you know, you're able to say the total number that's been expensed thus far or what might be remaining, considering we're talking about budget deliberations, and I think this might be pertinent to our discussions.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate that. You know, we're spending a good deal amount of time compiling the information. There's a lot of, and Mr. Mason could probably amplify a little bit on this. There are some guidelines that have changed, that have come down from the state and the federal government that have, not delayed, but just added to the work in putting together a full report. I would say that on a line-by-line basis, that any number is available to this body at any time. There is no, you know, no one's keeping any, there are no secrets, there's nothing being hidden. What we wanted to do was put together a full report on where we are. There's been nothing major expended that this council doesn't know about, as far as I know, that hasn't been discussed. I mean, we, this is a great story that we will be telling to this body and to the public based upon the federal money we've received the last two years from the city, the incredible amount of work that went into that, and the incremental benefit the people of the city has gotten. So we're looking forward to putting that report before you, and I certainly understand the concern about the timeliness. I think you and I have had some discussion about it, that, yeah, I know, and it's coming. It will be there, and it will be fully digestible for this body. That's sort of the goal here, is to make sure that we get everything in a way that everyone can understand it, can see it, and can, and can ask questions, relevant questions about it, and that's all it is.
Understood. I guess, I mean, that report, that presentation is really going to knock my socks off, then, because you've been working on it for a very long time. And Mr. Walker is correct in his notes that councilors can get that number at any time. So just maybe if the public wanted to know, we got $46,321,165.64.[1625.51] So just maybe if the public wanted to know, we got $46,321,165.64. The administration to date has spent a little over $36 million, and there's $8,953,661.72 left. Over 80% of those funds have been expended to date, and still the public doesn't fully understand where that money has gone. No further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Fassies.
Good evening, Counselor.
Just another thank you to your staff, Joe, Rob Stevens, Joe King, Rob Stevens. You know, some of the numbers tonight, I'm looking specifically at that building permit, $1.6 million over expected. I'm stunned that that number is, is that good, which shows, you know, in the last two years, the administration keeping things moving, you and I having multiple conversations, and I know with all the counselors in regards to planning, and your group is just on a tremendous job. And we've made quite a, I'll not say a comeback. I think we were there the whole time. We were just, I think, a little smarter, possibly than other municipalities. And we've got a good group of folks that run some very important departments. And I want to thank you very much, Jim, for all your, your help in regards to the city, which is definitely headed in the right direction. So thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you much. As you know, the city was able to continue constructing residential, you know, dwellings during the pandemic when some of the other cities and towns chose not to proceed. And it allowed us to keep them working. It allowed, keep the trades working. It allowed us to continue to help get much-needed housing in this city. And it's been a, I've been blessed. I have a terrific staff, a terrific staff that is focused on this. So I thank you very much, and I'll share your comments with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President DeBono?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fassies, just want to say thank you for all your hard work. You, King, Stevens, CDBG, Sean Glennon as well, for everything you guys have done over the past year. I mean, it's been, it's been probably very busy for you, has it not?
Very busy.
Very busy. And I'm glad we worked through the pandemic because I know that with the inflationary rates coming, obviously, there's not directly towards you. It's for some of development, but the prices go up, obviously. And if we, we had stopped, stopped workage and not did the work we did, we'd be way behind. So I'm glad we pushed forward with a lot of that. A lot of the issues in other cities or towns have, have dealt with that issue. Just want to say thank you. You're good up here. You're the last department for tonight, and thanks for coming up and speaking to us.
Well, thank you for the opportunity and the compliments, the staff. And I really appreciate what you have to say. So thank you all.
Okay. Any other councils? Counsel Palmuji.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to follow up on my distinguished colleague, Mr. Andronico. I felt like I was in a time machine. I went back to squiggly lines like 10 years when Mr. Walker was the press secretary, because we got some shake and bake there, a little bit of spin. That wasn't some chief of staff response. That was a, that was something different. So really, what, where's the, is there a report? Is it being worked on? Is someone assigned to it? What, when could we expect it? Is there a date certain? Any of those questions you can choose to answer?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. It is being worked on. It has been being worked on. Like I said initially to Counsel Andronico, there are a couple of priorities, issues relative to this council that took a little bit of, of time away from it. Frankly, it's my responsibility to put the final report together. I need to go through these line items one by one to make sure everything is, is taken away out of municipal finance ease and into a way that we're being transparent and you can understand exactly what is being spent. That's on me. The, the mayor's been on me to get this done. He's, has, has mentioned it more than one time. We're fully aware that we need to produce that report for you. And I would say a date certain, you know, before you guys break for the summer. I, I think that's before this body breaks for the summer, summer, excuse me, I think is, is a fair assessment of where we are in terms of compiling this and putting it together for you.
So, follow-up question. Will all of the money be spent by then? Or will there be any money left so that we can discuss what the money would be spent on before we get the report?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I do not believe all the money will be encumbered by that point. That's not, certainly not. And I, I don't think the, the intention was to suggest that we're trying to encumber all of the money before we report to you. I would suggest that
It's just a happy coincidence.
A, a bulk of, a, a substantial bulk, a vast majority of the money that's been expended to date has been fully discussed, vetted publicly, discussed publicly, announced publicly. There's been news stories. We've communicated directly with the council on particular items that have affected individual wards. There's just a lot of smaller things in there that take a little bit of time to work through and to identify explicitly what they are. But I would say the lion's share, as Counsel Andronico mentioned, that number of lion's share of that money has been very openly and, and, and publicly announced and been discussed with individual members of this body. Again, you know, I would suggest that the final reporting on this is ultimately my responsibility. The municipal finance department has done a terrific job maintaining this, keeping the record on it and keeping a number of spreadsheets. There's a lot of sources of this. It's not just APA. It's CARES. It's multiple forms of CARES, and it dates back two years. There's just a lot of stuff there. And, you know, the fact that it has, understanding that there's been two resolutions on it, this body's discussed it, you know, we're fully, we'll be fully prepared to provide this body with the information. And again, it's on me that it hasn't been produced yet.
Yeah, I mean, you can understand where the, where the body
Absolutely.
Or at least Counsel Andronico and I stand where, when we read about the city spending hundreds of thousands of dollars or millions of dollars in the Patriot ledger, and we have no quantification as to what's left in the pot or what other priorities there are, certainly as the legislative body of the city, we, I'm not saying it's up to us to approve that spending. I'm not saying that right now, currently, although that there have been municipalities who have argued that, that such a requirement is in fact necessary. I believe it's being litigated in the, in the court system right now, but, you know, we'll follow that from afar. But we would like to at least know what's, what's going on, what the, what the mayor's thinking is, or the administration's thinking, what the priorities are. When you say it's difficult to tease out what the money's been spent on, I, I get, I guess I get a little confused about that. So is that because so much money's been spent on or because there's so many smaller projects and it's such a vast amount of money that it's difficult to compile all at once? I'm, I'm just trying to understand. It's not a dig?
No, I get it. Through you, Mr. Chairman.
You get it? You get it?
It's the, it's the, it's the smaller amount in the number of projects, in the number of items that are being expended, individual, smaller items. And it doesn't always translate from what's in munis into, quite frankly, English. And that's what is my job with Eric and the team, is to go through those individual lines, knowing what they are, and then putting the notes on them that this is what this is, this is what this is, and going through that piece by piece. But there are reams of it, because it's been two years' worth of federal programs.
Sure. And, and let me just be very clear. I have no doubt that the monies being expended will significantly benefit the residents of Quincy. I mean, we see what the mayor proposes here that we have to vote on, and I've never seen anything that I thought was not going to benefit Quincy residents. It always just comes down to what the priorities are in terms of how we deliberate, certainly how I deliberate. But the, the amount of money we're talking about is more than 10% of our annual budget. Is it? Yeah. If I did math right. I don't know. If we have like a $300 million budget, it's 46 million, 10%? Anyone going to disagree with that? Okay, moving on. So about 10% of our budget, that's, that's the kind of thing. I know some towns and cities are having public hearings and asking for residents' ideas and similar to what you did with the, the, what's the thing? You know what I'm talking about? The "it's coming" thing? It's coming. You know, the Quincy 400, Quincy 400, right? That you did, the administration did a survey, right, as to what, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Right. So something similar to that. You've done it in the past. So, yeah, I just think that the public should have a voice, you know, maybe not through us, but at least through some sort of public process. And last, just to end, will you commit to, to not spending any of the new federal money until you've made a presentation? I know the, there's $2 billion that came to the state that Governor Baker, in the budget being deliberated, and I defer to Counsel Andronico, he knows better than I do, but that money could be released in July 1st. So can, can we just get some sort of commitment, like, you're not going to spend that money until you report what you spent the, the 46 million on?
Through you, Mr.
Is that fair?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Counselor. I mean, I, I think I indicated that, you know, before the end of the fiscal year, we'll have that report ready for you. So that should, if that money's available July 1st, that should cover that.
You did also indicate it would take two weeks the first time you introduced the resolution. So I'm not banking on the timing, but, but I appreciate, I appreciate the sentiment. Keep up the good work, Mr. Walker. Thank you.
Counsel Andronico.
Just one, one final point on this. We asked last fall. We were told it would take a couple of weeks. We get a report. Didn't get a report. We asked again at the beginning of the session for an update, and again, it was unanimous. We'd like a public report and accounting. Didn't get it. Now we're told, I, I believe we said, by the end of this session. I'm not sure if we might need to have an emergency session eventually after deliberations to schedule this in. But look, you know, you said no the first time. The administration did to having a public process for input. Least I think you could do is just tell us where the money's going. I'm not, not looking for a full report there. That, that was my final point. And I'd like to thank Mr. Fassies for his patience throughout this. As some have said tonight, your department really does do a great job. Every time I reach out, they're more than willing to give me their time. You're always willing to give me your time to talk about resident concerns, what's going on in the city, and we genuinely appreciate that. So thank you again, Mr. Fassies, for your patience.
Thank you again.
Okay. Any other councils? We have a motion to approve. So on that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seeing none? Thank you, Mr. Fassies.
Thank you. Thank you all.
And just a reminder that we have Monday, the 23rd, at 6:30, the Finance Committee. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Okay, we're adjourned.